All right, it says six o'clock. So Autumn, is staff ready to begin?
Yes.
All right, council members, are we ready to begin? Okay, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Plan Commission of Cattani for April the 17th, 2023. And for our first order of business, we have the appointment of new commissioners. I'll turn that over to staff.
Yes, so we will be doing the oath of office for the new commissioners. So let's see. So Ryan Long, would you like to come up to the, right here, the stand?
I, say your full name.
I, Ryan Long.
Hesulally swear.
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
All right, Kimberly? You finish your right hand and repeat after me. I, say your full name.
I, Kimberly Moffett.
Hesulally swear.
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Carla, and I just want to welcome Commissioner Moffett and Commissioner Long to the Plan Commission.
Thank you.
Glad to have you with us. All right, I'll ask for the roll call for attendance now.
All right, Commissioner Long?
Here.
Commissioner Moffett?
Here.
Commissioner Berman?
Here.
Vice Chair Jalardi?
Here.
Chair Savage?
Here. Thank you. Approval of minutes, we have two minutes. The first one is from a special meeting on January 17th, which I was in attendance. Were you able to go online and read?
I saw it online, yes.
Okay, have you seen it online as well? Okay, so we have three people, so we have quorum to approve those minutes. So if we could have a motion to approve.
May I move that we approve the minutes from the special meeting of January 17th, 2023?
I second it.
All right, and then do we need a roll call on that, Carla?
Um, I'm going to defer. Okay, yeah, let's get a roll call. All right, so Commissioner Long?
Hi.
Commissioner Moffett?
Abstain.
Commissioner Berman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jalardi?
Yes.
Chair Savage?
Yes. Okay, and then for the meetings of regular meeting on March 20th, I have a motion to approve.
Can I move that we approve the regular meeting of March 20th, 2023?
I second.
All right, and then we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Moffett?
Abstain.
Commissioner Berman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jalardi?
Yes.
Chair Savage?
Yes. Thank you. All right, next, do we have any changes to the agenda? Nothing, okay. Now is the time where we have oral and written communications from the public. If anyone would like to step forward to the podium, now is the time to do that. Hi.
My name is Iris Weaver, I'm the executive director of the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition and a longtime Cattani resident. And I just wanted to share with everyone that May is National Bike Month. And May 18th is Bike to Work Day, and we will be having a whole ton of different activities all throughout the month. The city of Cattani has been very supportive and worked with us on that. And there will be an Energizer Station here in Cattani on that day. I have some flyers that I'll leave out in the lobby, but we appreciate always working with the city on that event. One other thing, the invitation that I want to make since you have new members. A year or two ago, when the commission, I mean, when the city first started looking at updating the Bike and Ped Master Plan, I made an offer to the commission at the time to take everybody out on a bike ride, to see it, you know, what's working and not working from the point of view of someone who rides it every day. And at the time, the commission declined. But my offer still stands, so I would love to do that at some point. And in fact, I'm in the next month or two going to be starting a regular monthly ride here in Cattani. A family-friendly, slow, easy ride, built off of the Talk of Tuesday Ride in Santa Rosa and other community rides around the county. So hopefully I will see some of you all out on the road at those.
Thank you, and what was that date again of the?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, okay, great, thank you. Do we have anyone online today, or is everything just real time?
We don't have any Zoom attendees at this time.
All right. Okay, if there's no one else to speak, then we'll move to matters at hand. And our first matter at hand is the bicycle and pedestrian elements of the city's recent and proposed street paving projects. And is that for you, Craig?
It is.
All right.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. I have Matt Wargala from GHD here with us tonight. He was one of the designers managing the, a couple of the projects that you'll see presented tonight. And we have a presentation. The purpose. Thank you. The purpose of tonight's presentation is informational, to inform the planning commission on how city staff incorporates recommendations from the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan into paving projects. These are routine pavement maintenance projects to, that are done on, just methodically over the years to keep ahead of the wear and tear that the roadway is undergo. Basically, this is the outline of the presentation today. We'll talk about the pavement management program, which is the PMP. And that's, this lays out the systematic approach whereby we prioritize the roadway projects. And then talk about the Bike Ped Master Plan. And then we'll go into the three current projects that are, that are right in front of us tonight. And then we'll conclude with the recommendation. Oh, I'm advancing them on my computer. Yeah, pavement management program, it's like the third or fourth slide in. Okay, right there, thank you. I'll try to remember to advance the slides. So the pavement management program is a state mandated program which has a Street Saver software program. Every two years, we're required to have that updated to remain eligible for federal and state street grant money. And it involves an inspection of each one of our streets, segments. We have something like 200-plus street segments that are walked every two years by a certified inspector that will categorize each segment by its condition. And the condition is defined by Pavement Condition Index from 0 to 100, where 100 is a new street and 0 is just nothing. It's degraded to nothing. Any street that's below about 26 or so is just in very poor condition. You try, we try to get our roadways up to the 70s, high 70s, or even the 80s. And that would mean annual treatments would be much less expensive. We just do very cost-effective slurry seal treatments and avoid the costly reconstruction. So just as an example, back five years ago, oh, please advance the slides. Just five years ago, our PCI was 55, and this is looked upon as being a city at risk, with its streets at risk, which means it needs attention, it's about to drop off to the very poor category. And then just in January of '22, so this is a little while ago, but you can see the, next slide, please. We can see that how the conditions have improved, it went from 55 to 66. So we're out of the at-risk category and we're into the bottom of the good category. So we're still endeavoring to get it into the 70s and higher. So, next slide, please.
Okay. Can I ask just a couple of interesting questions?
Sure.
Other than the volume of traffic and weather conditions, are there other things that lead to the deterioration of the roadways?
Those are the main ones, the traffic, and it's the big trucks, the garbage trucks, and the large 18-wheelers that come through town that really punish the roadways. And the roadways are the main thoroughfares that are anticipated to get that kind of traffic are beefed up. If you have a thicker cross-section, but residential streets get garbage trucks, and those are very punishing on our roadways.
And then, just, is there kind of a rule of thumb, is the number of years it takes a road to go from 100 down to 75 or down to 60 or something, or is there a lifespan of a road?
There is, there is. And the computer, the software that all these 200 street segments are plugged into, it also, it keeps track of when it was paved, what type of treatment it received, and the length of time that treatment is expected to last. So it's addressing your question, but in a different way. Instead of saying, hey, a street just degrades this way. Like a slurry seal lasts up to about three, four years. The street reconstruction that we're seeing is up to, it's over 10 years, but that's anticipating having routine slurry seal treatments. So, so yes, that's all worked into the model.
Thank you, Craig.
We have, the city has a Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. And this is a figure out of the master plan. It shows the ultimate build-out of the bicycle and pedestrian pathways. Then the next slide, please, shows a close-up with the legend superimposed there. Any solid line, independent of its color, is an existing Class 1, Class 2, or Class 3 pathway. And then if it's dashed, it's a proposed, it doesn't exist today. The staff looks at this figure quite, we refer to it when we have a street maintenance project. So we'll come back to this and say, oh, we're doing West Sierra Avenue, for example. And we noticed that there's a purple line through it, which is a class, existing Class 2 bike lane. And we'll be hearing about that later on in the presentation. As time goes on, there's additional tools that Caltrans comes up with in the industry to make Class 2 bike lanes safer and increase signage, increase striping. And so even though this was an existing Class 2 bike lane, you'll see in the course of the presentation how we've managed to enhance that feature. Also on here, on the bottom right corner, hidden by the captions, there is the dashed purple, which is Myrtle Avenue. So in contrast to West Sierra Avenue that has an existing Class 2, Myrtle does not have a bike lane at all right now. And the master plan identifies it for a future Class 2 bike lane. And that is one of our projects, that's the 2023 Street Rehabilitation Project that's underway right now. That's going to be paving that roadway.
Craig, could you tell me the difference between a 1, 2, and a 3?
Sure, a Class 1 is a standalone bike path, so it's standalone, it's independent of the roadway. And then a Class 2 is one that shares the roadway, but it's delineated. It's got a line and it's got a delineated area of the roadway dedicated to the bike lane. And then a Class 3 is one that completely shares the road. And you'll see these charros, these stencils on the ground saying, hey, vehicles are to share the road with bicycles. So bicycles are actually traveling in the travel lane of those roadways.
Okay, thank you.
So then as the street gets repaved, the proposed bike lane then becomes a reality. Is that how it works, or is there a separate step that takes for that proposed to be approved before it gets done again?
There is no additional step. The thought process is that the street maintenance projects have certain constraints. We, the money is there to keep, to upgrade the existing pavement within its existing extents. So the edge of pavement. You'll see throughout town where our stormwater master plan calls for installing a brand-new stormwater pipe. And along with it, maybe a sidewalk in that area. And so those things happen with development. As those undeveloped lots get developed, those frontage improvements, as we call them, get installed, rather than being done as part of a street maintenance project. Because if those, those are very costly improvements, facilities to add to a maintenance project, and it would make our street maintenance program unviable. So what we do is our thought process is what can we incorporate within those constraints of a street maintenance project? And there's quite a bit, as you'll see, that we can add.
And is this map on the city website under one of the, the map that we're looking at now? Is that information on the city website, or where could we go to refer to that after the meeting?
There is, if you go to the city's website and under search, type in Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, it will show up. If you go to the public works engineering page and you look for resources, you'll see on the left side a list of the master plans, including the water sewer master plan, the bike pad master plan, the parks master plan, will be available from the website.
Thank you, this is really interesting to look at.
Sorry, real quick, Craig. Is there a Class 4 that's kind of a newer classification of bike lanes?
Are you aware of one? Okay.
Yeah, there is, is this on, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, Class 4 is basically, yes, is Class 2 buffered with a vertical element. So it could be like a bollard or a planter. You have to be, you know, there's constraints with those and considerations with those. You know, with on-street parking, if parking exists, it doesn't exist. But yes, does that answer your question?
It does, it's something I've heard of, and I just didn't see it mentioned here, so I was wondering if that's.
Yeah, many, many cities, you know, Oakland, many cities are installing those in certain locations, yeah.
It didn't exist when the master plan was made.
It's a newer one.
Yeah, it's fairly recent development.
So when we're looking at classifications of different bike paths, what are the main constraints, is it road size, cost, from going from, say, a Class 3 to a Class 2?
From a Class, if there's a Class 3 out there now and we're looking to upgrade it to a Class 2, the major constraint would be the roadway width. Because a Class 2 requires a dedicated four-to-six foot on each side of the road for that lane. And there's, the roads, some of the roads are just not wide enough to accommodate that. Next slide, please. Okay, so that concludes the background where we talked about the pavement management program, how we prioritize these streets and the purpose of the street maintenance program, and how we work in the recommendations of the Bike Pad Master Plan. Now, this is a list of the three streets we're highlighting tonight. They're highlighted because they're current, two of them. The first two are actively in construction right now. And the third is closing in on 100% design. And we're submitting that to the California Transportation Commission at the end of this month. So just in less than two weeks. Because we're getting a $956,000 grant for that project. And for the second project there, we've gotten a $1.25 million grant for that project. And the first two, like I said, are actively construct, under construction. So we'll be looking to describe these to you as examples of how we incorporate bike pad features. Next slide, please. Okay, the pavement rehabilitation project is a, we just put that out, we awarded it, and the contractor is now demolishing curb ramps and getting going on that and causing, you know, it will cause traffic delays in this area. There's Page Street, Delano, part of Old Redwood Highway through downtown. You've got Lund Hill, Myrtle Avenue, John Roberts, Macklin, LeBeck. You'll see those streets highlighted there. This slide highlights the bike pad that we've been able to incorporate. The paving kind of speaks for itself. We're applying pavement treatments to reflect the actual, oh, next slide, please. We're, to reflect the actual existing condition of the roadway. And we've managed to, for Myrtle, as we remember, the master plan calls for a Class 2. There's no bike lane at all on Myrtle today, and the roadway is in very poor shape. So it needs rehabilitation, which is rebuilding the street. We're planning on adding Class 2 bike lane striping. It's wide enough for a four-and-a-half to five-foot bike lane on either side. And on most of it, we can get a two-foot buffer lane. But the areas closest to Old Redwood Highway, there's not enough room for that buffer lane. So we were trying to get what we can out of these roadways, but it will result in, you know, a Class 2 with a buffer zone, going back to just the Class 2 path delineation and no buffer, based on what the street width will allow. And we're upgrading, this is really standard as well, upgrading six curb ramps. We take this as an opportunity to go through, as time goes on, curb ramps settle and crack over time and become unsafe. And then also, the regulations evolve and maybe call for them to be flatter or have a larger sort of area at the top. And or to have the domes, the orange domes on top. So as time goes by, our ramps get sort of antiquated, and we have to come through and upgrade them. Okay, so in front of Putnam Park, that's along Myrtle, we have this pretty old asphalt pathway. And the roots are cutting in there and it's settling, and so it is, it is an asphalt pathway, but it's getting kind of bumpy. So this project includes just ripping out all that asphalt, regrading it, and widening it out and putting in that decomposed granite with a binder in it, like you see across the street at the Floody Bronda Ranch. And we've been putting on West School Street, the pathway that goes over the hill there. It's that decomposed granite, so we're putting that in front of the park. And on Page Street, we're putting. And on Page Street, we're putting in a speed bump, which is a response to the local road safety plan, LRSP. That's also available on our website. I could have mentioned it early on in the presentation, along with the master plan and the pavement management program. It's a fairly new report that we did. I'm not sure if you're all familiar with it. And the roots, it's a little too close to a couple of trees over there. So we had it designed to move away from the trees. And we've raised it about, I think, three inches, three, maybe four inches. So that should solve the flooding problem.
Thank you.
We're also addressing the flooding in the parking lot. There's a pond that creates in there. So we're regrading that, resurfacing the Putnam Park parking lot as well. Next slide, please. So the next project on the list is the Downtown Connectivity and Safety Improvements Project, otherwise known as Quick Strike. You may have heard of it, referred to that way. And we're doing the Inner Hub Street, which is La Plaza, and all of West Sierra Avenue from Old Redwood Highway to the city limits. And the plan sheets, as we go through them, start on the left, on the left side of this figure and work our way under the freeway and towards the La Plaza. Next slide, please. So as with the last project, we're, we've striped West Sierra Avenue to put in class-two buffered bike lanes. And that's consistent along the entire stretch of West Sierra Avenue. There was sufficient space to do that. We've got stamped crosswalks, so you'll see these stamped herringbone crosswalks that we've been putting along Old Redwood Highway. We're going to extend that, that space to City Hall by putting them along the stretch, at least to City Hall. We've got green bike lanes and a bike box. There's a bike box on West Sierra Avenue as you approach Old Redwood Highway. And we can address that a little more detail.
What's a bike box?
Okay.
So it's basically an area at a signalized intersection that ties in with the class-two that allows a cyclist to get into the left turn ahead of the vehicles. So it also allows for the video, the detection for the signal, to recognize that there's a bike there and give additional green time to that left, left-turning bicyclist. So it makes it much easier for the cyclist to negotiate left turning.
Thank you.
Craig, I have a quick question. I've always been curious why on West Sierra, there's not a crosswalk at Valparaiso.
That would, okay, well. Yeah. Why isn't there one? There's no sidewalk on that side west of there. And I think what we'd be looking for is public input for calling for a crosswalk there. We just recently added crosswalks at Cypress and at Water Road. And so we would have to start looking at the roadway as a whole as to, you know, where additional crosswalks are needed. So that's, I think that's an open question. I mean, we, we, we could add that to the list and we could have it studied to see what would go along with that crosswalk. Because if there was a sidewalk on either side of the road, there is on the, on one side, but not the other, that would be less of a concern. But we would likely have to put in that sidewalk at the same time as a crosswalk. But we are looking, this is where we're looking citywide with projects like the Sidewalk Gap Closure Project, which is in our CIP, which was presented just last month, I believe, to this body, where we're seeing gaps in the sidewalk and looking, designing those to fill them in. And one of them is along Valparaiso. So it would actually lead people on a loop down from Delano Park, across the bridge, across Cotati Creek. And at, at that time, maybe the proximity to East School Street in that crossing is, gives people a way to get across the street there. So we'd have to look at some, some different factors that would before justifying a crosswalk at that location.
Kind of a follow-up question. You mentioned other crosswalks that are going to be going in. Are they crosswalks with lights or just unleaded crosswalks? Or how, what's determined whether a crosswalk has lights, like the one here on East Cotati, as you go past the fire station?
If a crosswalk is at an uncontrolled intersection or it's at a mid-block location, so there's not an intersection there, then it needs additional visibility enhancements, like the lights. Because drivers are not expecting to see somebody crossing in the middle of a block. There's just not. Whereas if you have an intersection in front of City Hall, for example, East School Street and West Sierra Avenue, there, it's an always stop. So cars stop there and have flashing lights. That the drivers would be kind of distracting because they, it's like, oh, stopping is optional. It's only when the lights are flashing do I need to stop. No, it's a stop sign. You need to stop all the time. So the stop signs are the safety measure there and makes it a lot safer.
So the additional crosswalks that are going in, there be where there's stop signs? Or there's already, I guess, already.
For this project, yes, that's correct.
And typically, it's just if there's no stop sign, then it would require lights or need lights.
Okay.
Well, now, the stop center, they can still have the, like, the button for people to cross with the blinking lights on the crosswalk?
No.
No?
No, not here, not where there's an always stop intersection. We have another branch of what we do is the, it's, well, another, it's another annual capital project that you'll see in the CIP is a citywide bicycle and pedestrian safety project. And that carries over year after year. And that's where we pull in public comment. And for, for crosswalks and for speed bumps and for safety measures that come to the surface and are, become clearly a priority, we have budget to do those. And so you'll see this year before the end of June, a crosswalk, a mid-block crosswalk go in at Valparaiso. And that's almost, it's just a little bit offset from Delano Park. But that's another example where we will actively put in, hear the requests for crosswalks and respond to it and put them in. We'll have it studied to make sure it's safe and we can, what design elements are required. But they, they are being put in. Let's see. Oh, and we're putting bollard lights up at, at the East School Street and West Sierra. There's about six, I think, six or seven, six? Six bollard lights going in on, they're going to be on the sidewalk, not in, not in the bike lanes, obviously. And that's going to be shining light down. So that's pedestrian-friendly because these, as opposed to the streetlights that are twenty feet in the air, these ones will shine light on the pedestrians and where they're walking so that they can see the curb and step over the curb, walk across the street. And importantly also, drivers can see the pedestrians, it lights them up as they're walking across the street. If I don't, all of these, these features, as you go around the state, you'll, you'll see different examples of it. Some cities will get the jump on some of these features earlier than others. We're always looking for those, like, well, that cannot be applied to Cotati. Next slide, please. So here's an example screenshot of a plan page from the Connectivity Project. And this is right out front here. It shows the use of the green bike paint at the intersections, the buffered class-two bike lane, the stamped herringbone crosswalks, and the enhanced, the upgrading curb ramps. So it's one of the plan sheets after it's all been paved. This is what the contractor will look at to lay down the striping. And there's also signage. Okay, next slide, please. Okay. The Redwood Drive and Cypress Avenue project is nearing a hundred percent design. So as opposed to the other projects that have been designed, put out to bid, and we've hired contractors and it's underway, this one is still in the final, in the design process. We've got class-two buffered bike lanes, green bike lanes, paint at intersections, and upgrading twelve curb ramps. It's, the scope covers, I didn't put a map in here, but it's Redwood Drive from the Park and Ride Lot at one sixteen, all the way to the city limits with Runner Park at Copeland Creek.
Craig, I'm curious, this is the perfect slide to come up. I've often wondered, I know we've been transitioning to some of the brick look on the crosswalks versus the painted. Does one act as more of a calming device for drivers than the other? Because people come off the freeway and they fly down here to get to City Hall. A lot of times they don't even come to a stop here in front of City Hall. They just kind of like maybe slow down a little bit and keep on going. And I know there's a lot of different traffic calming devices. I'm just curious if the brick look makes somebody, you know, think that the road's a little different and drive a little slower.
I, I, I don't know. I would suspect not. Especially at night, you would, you really can't see the bricks. Do they have an impact, in your opinion?
I would say at uncontrolled intersection, or uncontrolled, meaning that there's no stop sign here. This is essentially, essentially a yield control location. So having high-vis markings like we have here does highlight and makes the crosswalk a lot more visible from further away. You know, I have my own preferences. You know, if the, if the city wants to install the stamped with basic lines, I think those are still effective. But for a location like this, the high-vis crossing, cross markings are probably a better option. At a stop sign where you're forced to stop, where there's conveyance or right-of-way is very clear, then use of the high-vis is less critical. So using a stamped crosswalk with, with basic markings, the twelve-inch markings on the other side, it's not as critical at those locations. So I don't know if.
Yeah, the, the, the use of the herringbone bricks is more as a sense of place than I think it is of a safety feature. So we're, at Cypress, we're starting to get away from the downtown core.
Right.
So we, we're not, we're not looking at putting them everywhere throughout the city. It's really just to define the downtown.
I was just curious because there is a visual difference. And I know that people talk about traffic calming devices. I was just kind of curious, is that one of them that kind of helps slow people down?
But I, but we will see, we will see, we're hoping that the traffic calming features.
Recording in progress.
Oh, do we have to start all over?
Yeah, I was just going to add, to get the buffered bike lanes in place here, and, and the buffers actually don't start until around Cypress because there isn't enough width going towards one-on-one. But we are necking the lanes down to eleven feet instead of twelve feet. That should have some impact. We're also using some transverse speed reduction markings between Cypress and Water Road, which also should have some impact. So we're hope, we're hopeful that, you know, speeds will come down. The city's got speed data from before and so we can take speed data after and check that.
Thank you. I have a comment about this picture as well because I'm really concerned about the Mobile Home Park that is right up the street there on West Sierra. And the fact that there is no sidewalk, there is no safe cross for them to get to a sidewalk. They have to go along the road at night to get to Water Road. It's, it's been this way. I've been talking about it for twenty-plus years and it continues to be just a harrowing experience for the folks who, who live there. I'm really concerned about at least having pedestrian access, let alone bicycle safety. So I'd like a crosswalk by the Mobile Home Park so that they can at least cross to the sidewalk safely.
These are exactly the comments we're looking for from the commission and from the public. Because this is what really makes our streets safer. I would suggest we add that to the Sidewalk Gap Closure Capital Project because that is one that's specifically adding sidewalks and looking to see where we'd get the biggest impact to adding a sidewalk. And that looks to be a location that fits the bill.
Exactly.
It would connect the Mobile Home Park to a, a bus stop where there, there's really no really good way to get there today. So, so thank you for that comment.
Thank you.
How does something get added to that sideways gap closure project?
It is in year two of our five-year CIP right now for construction in twenty-four, twenty-five. So years two through five of that, of the CIP are, are used for our planning purposes. They're like, okay, as those, as those get closer to today, they start getting more and more refined, more defined, the money sources start, you know, we, we start budgeting for them and the grant. That one is actually in line for a state grant. And so at this point, two years out, it's still early enough to add segments to that project.
And what's the process to add a segment to that? Is there a gatekeeper on it or?
I will make a note of it tonight and we'll, we'll revise the project description.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sorry to keep talking on this stretch of road. I mean, clearly it's important to people. It's a pretty busy road coming into town and a lot of traffic. I kind of live in the area, so we, you know, we walk this road as well. Is there, you kind of discussed, you know, touched on traffic reducing features, people coming off the freeway, flying into downtown. Are there other things to do or that have been considered to help reduce traffic as people are coming into these neighborhoods off the freeway?
We, we did, we did put the RFPs there at Water Road.
What's that? Sorry.
Oh, the, I'm sorry, the, okay. Reflective, it's, it's these lights. Rectangular reflective. Okay.
Sorry, rectangular rapid flashing beacons. They're basically enhanced conspicuity. They're pedestrian-activated with a push button. There's various types of these lights around. These seem to be pretty popular and studies show they're pretty effective for yield rate. These seem to be pretty popular and studies show they're pretty effective for yield rates. You, you might have seen in roadway warning lights as well when the lights are actually in the pavement. I think some cities, those are falling out of favor, but you know, some, that is a preference for some. And then there's actually a, a, one more device that's called a pedestrian hybrid beacon, which is more of a signal. That one can't just be installed without meeting certain criteria warrant conditions. And, and actually, most of these devices, we don't wanna just install. They start losing their meaning when they're overinstalled. It's one of the, it's a traffic engineering principle, but yeah.
Have you seen, I've, I've seen in cities at crosswalks where they narrow the road by bringing the sidewalk out a little bit into the street to reduce traffic going into those areas? What, have you, do you know what those are called or?
Those are bulb outs. Those are called bulb outs. They're, they're bulb out.
Where the sidewalk kinda comes out, cuts out into the street.
Yeah, the, the challenge with those is always maintaining enough width for the, for the motor vehicles and the bicyclists. If you're maintaining class two on-street bike facilities, sometimes there's a challenge with, with bulb outs. In this area, you know, with, you know, there's potential for that, for sure.
And then with this intersection, you can see in the picture, you have the continental sidewalks going across West Sierra. But then on the other side, you just kinda do the standard crosswalk. Is there any reason why we wouldn't do the full markings across the?
That's, that's a preferential. Some cities prefer to keep the high vis to yield only, you know, yield only, free flowing conditions. Whereas the side streets stop controlled, so there's already, the drivers are already supposed to stop. Whether they comply with the stop center or not, it's another question. But that's more of the reason why some cities do what, what, what's shown here in the picture. So, but it's really a preference thing. Some cities, they put high vis everywhere.
Yeah, is it more aesthetic or cost driven?
Uh, can be, yeah, the, so there is more stripe involved with the continental, so those are always gonna be more costly. But it's debatable if they're, they're less maintenance because typically those stripes are located outside of the wheel path. Whereas, you know, the, the basic crosswalk is getting some wheel path through it all the time. So you, you see where the markings tend to wear out right in the wheel path, so.
And finally, we did, we did install a speed feedback sign by the bus stop a couple of years ago. Uh, next slide. And do you wanna take this away?
Oh, sure.
I'll, I'll, I'll pretty much turn the presentation over to Matt Wargola to go sheet by sheet.
Yeah, so I was, Craig asked me to go sheet by sheet here for the new project that we're still in design. This is a state funded project through an LPP grant. The city was successfully, successfully obtained, I think, for one point eight million or something. I forget exactly what the figures are.
Ninety-six.
But in any case, it's Redwood, Redwood Drive from the park and ride, which is shown on the top left-hand corner, all the way to city limits, which is Copeland Creek, city of Roanoke Park, city limits. And what we're doing here for Ped and Bikes is we're essentially, as Craig mentioned, upgrading all pedestrian curb ramps that aren't, aren't already meeting current ADA standards. And then enhancing where we can bike facilities. We're using green markings where there are conflict areas. And that's really to highlight that, hey, there could be a cyclist here, you know, for right turning vehicles in particular. And since we are in Caltrans right of way, we do have the need to maintain the, the lane geometry here. So the left turn pocket, the, the through right-left, and the two receiving lanes. That's mainly because there are very large vehicles that use this intersection and there isn't really much more we can do to, to help that. But in any case, we are doing our, our best here to neck lanes down to a minimum of eleven feet, add more width to the bike lane where we can't get a buffer in. So we have six feet minimum, which is a step in the right direction from where they were at five feet. And I think we can go to the next slide. This is continuing north, northbound. We're adding green markings in that Lowe's entrance, right through the entrance. And we've got the signal at, I think that's Hellman, Hellman Lane, adding the, the green markings. And then between Hellman Lane and, I forget the name of the cross streets, but into the industrial area, the, the road is really too narrow to have any sort of buffer. Next slide, next slide, please. But we are necking the lanes down to eleven feet and adding that width to the bike lane. So that should hopefully do something for traffic calming and also provide a little bit more width for the bikes to navigate. We are up, up against the one oh one, there's the barrier between Redwood Drive and one oh one. Next slide, please. And then here's where the fun begins. We are adding class two buffered here, so we're, we're necking lanes down. We're also adding a buffer. There is a lot of pavement width here that's not really utilized very well. So this is gonna be a better utilization for that. We're pushing the bikes away from the, the one oh one barrier a little bit more and providing them a buffer. They're getting a buffer in both, both directions. Next slide, please. Very, very much the same through this intersection here. And then again, adding green where there are conflicts with right turning vehicles. Next slide, please. And then we're coming into city limits at Copeland Creek, which, you know, the city of Roanoke Park has got plans for a one oh one overcrossing or one oh one crossing of some kind that this project won't, will tie in with, without any, any real issue. That's Redwood Drive, maybe I could stop if there's any questions.
I was just curious about the tie-in with what's going on with Roanoke Park. So do we share our plans with them and them with us or?
Yeah, so we, well, in particular, we're coordinating with Roanoke Park because the east side, their east side trunk sewer comes through here and they've got a couple of manholes. So they're aware of the project. We've looked at what they have, which is basically a study and some concept plans. We have an idea of what they're looking at, but they're, they're not really anywhere close to really knowing what they're gonna be doing there. And our improvements are essentially striping only. From the looks of, conceptually, it looks like it'll be fine. I have every confidence that it, it'll work out fine. They're gonna be what looks to be widening the Copeland Creek. I don't know if that's a culvert or a bridge, but you know, adding sidewalks, widening that, and making the whole experience better. I will add, we are adding share the road signs where we are eventually, you know, the class two lane ends as we're going northbound into the city of Roanoke Park until I think it does open up again in Roanoke Park. But over the, the culvert, which is really narrow, of course, a little bit outside of the scope of this project, but.
And then the, um, the exit entrance into Lowe's. I know everybody's supposed to take a right-hand turn, but I go to Lowe's an awful lot more than I want to. But it's amazing how many people come out of there and go, go around and take the left-hand turn. So is there any way of fixing that? Because since there is almost kind of a blind corner down Redwood coming to that, it's, you know, people have to shoot out really fast to try to make that left-hand turn.
Uh, that's something we can look at. I, I haven't looked at that, honestly. I'm not even sure exactly what left turn that is, but well, I'll talk with Craig.
Yes, it's, it's from the parking lot when you go out. It's designed, there's, you know, there's the, the build out there in concrete to make everybody take. You saw it on, on one of the slides.
That's the main entrance with the big median?
Right.
Okay.
And it's designed for everybody to exit to the right.
Okay.
But a lot of people do that.
Okay.
And go to the left. And I think at one time, there used to be a right-hand turn sign there, but I don't know if it's there any longer or not.
Run over. I think it was flattened recently.
Better channelization potentially, or, you know, better curbing?
Yeah, there's only so much you can do about poor behavior, right? So hopefully the, the striping's gonna slow down the traffic. But it looks like that intersection or that turnout was meant, saw that as an issue and that was their solution.
Yeah. It seems like that, I know, like on Santa Rosa Avenue, one of the shopping centers there, there's that same type of thing where you have to turn right. And they actually have extended the little bump out a little further. So that way, when you come, you really do have to take that right-hand turn unless you wanna drive over the top of it.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you for the comments.
Do you wanna go to Cypress?
Yeah, we'll go to Cypress real quick.
I have one more question.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Is, um, we received a late letter from Neil and he comments on a section of Redwood Drive where the Copeland Bridge is. Is that in one of these diagrams?
Yeah, it's actually the bottom pane, the right-hand corner. That's where the, you can kinda see it goes across the one oh one, it's that concrete patch.
Okay.
So that, I believe is a culvert, some people might call it a bridge. And so, yeah, the, the roadway is fairly narrow across that.
And there's nothing in here that addresses any widening of, of that or?
No.
Is there anything that addresses any safety concerns with that of, of making it more safety while it stays small?
Yeah, so we are adding share the road, so it's a warning sign with a bicycle on it and it'll say share the road, which is better than what's there.
Signage, signage?
Yeah.
And, and as we had mentioned, we're coordinating. We're, we're, we're looking at what, what Roanoke Park's plans are with their pedestrian crossing of highway one oh one. But it, that, as Matt said, that's at least five, eight years out.
Okay.
Uh, next, next slide, please. The other part of the, this project is Cypress Avenue, and that's from West Sierra to city limits, which is just past McKinnon Court. As Craig pointed out in the pedestrian and bicycle master plan, that this Cypress Avenue calls for class two proposed. However, the current width doesn't really support that. And what I believe to be the case is that as development goes in, in these areas urbanize, they'll be conditioned to do some frontage improvements that'll widen the road. At that point, then we can get class two the entire way. But the reality is, we, we, so we've, we've had to kinda prioritize and, and think about this a little bit. We figured there's quite a grade going up from West Sierra. So having a, a class two bike lane in the uphill direction made the most sense with the available space that we have. So we've added a class two lane at the minimum width, which is four feet away from a curb, thirteen feet min with on-street parking, so we're not removing any parking. All the way past Orteski, and where it then transitions to a class three with share the road markings and signage. So if we, and you can see, we also have a class three shared the road with shared the road markings and signage in the opposite direction. So northbound versus southbound. Uh, next slide, please. So, so the top pane here shows where we transitioned from class two in the north or southbound direction to a class three. And we're just about at the top of the hill there. It, it, it is rolling beyond that, but that does provide some, some benefit for cyclists going uphill. And we are also upgrading the pedestrian curb ramps, which I failed to mention just a second ago, but all the existing pedestrian curb ramps are getting upgraded. Next slide. And this continues on, you know, we've, we're going to, I think, actually ten-foot minimum lane width here. And that's because it's a, you know, more of a local street and there's less, you know, heavy vehicles using, using the facility. And that allowed us to get the class two in earlier. And this maintains class three all the way to city limits with the shared road markings. Next slide, please.
So on that slide there, that's the area that I'm most concerned about because since the new houses have gone in.
Okay.
That people are using from Valpriso, Lund Hill, Cypress. They make, they're doing that as, as their walk, with their walking or their dogs, their biking. And in the last couple of years, I'd probably say the foot traffic, traffic has increased tenfold. And there is no, I mean, there's no rule on either side.
Yeah.
And so people are either getting into the bushes or the cars are constantly going on the other side of the street to get around them. And it's, and then the, the stop sign there down the street is another one that unfortunately, the one stop sign just before it, the street sign, isn't really highly visible. And people blow through that stop sign all the time.
So that maybe, you know, we could look at, as far as the stop sign goes, we can enhance, you know, we can add beacons potentially.
Well, that's, I think, would be an excellent start.
Yeah. We hesitate to add rumble strips because those create noise and then that creates a nuisance issue. So that, that may be something we could potentially add to this project. As far as the pedestrian circulation, yeah, that is a challenge. The road is narrow, the drainage is very poor. And, you know, it's all surface drainage, so it's ditches and culverts. You know, over time, I'm, I'm sure that'll change, but that is, that is a challenge that's gonna remain. It's a little bit outside of the scope of this project, unfortunately.
I, I'd just like to echo that, especially that top picture, where the sidewalk ends after those houses that are right there is scary. It's a scary stretch. And there are a lot of people, cars are moving very fast. So if there's anything we could do with pedestrian safety there, that would be fabulous. I also know that on the plans here, it says that there's gonna be some vegetation trimmed in coordination with property owners. And I would like to just stress how important coordination with property owners is. I think there was a time in my life where I was calling Craig almost every day about a random hole that appeared in my yard from a contractor that I wasn't aware of. And so just, uh, coordination and communication is amazing. And I'd love to know how you're going to be communicating with the property owners.
So it is a condition of the construction contract. The vegetation trimming in this, for this project is extremely minor. It's actually just overgrown within the city's right of way. We're not going on private property on this project. So it'd be strictly if, I think it actually, in the one location, it's a curb ramp that's actually so overgrown that you can't even see that there's a sidewalk there. So that, that's this particular project. But I think in general, yes, where we're impacting residents, we, we always try to reach out. And during construction, that is gonna be a requirement and the city's team will be coordinating that.
Yeah, on, on vegetation too, because I know some of those trees are like right there on the, the roadway and the overhang is really pretty low. I mean, the UPS trucks, a lot of times they rub against that stuff.
Yeah, that is a challenge with paving too. So, you know, the contractor, with the help of an arborist, does have to trim the canopies so that they can actually pave the road.
And since that area is fairly rural along that stretch, that there's no sidewalks, I mean, I know you said about rumble strips, the noise problem, but since there's really not many homes along there, I think that, that would be a, a good thing to kinda help slow some people down.
I'll defer to Craig.
Well, there's, there's unintended consequences too, like for the bikes, right? The bikes are going downhill through there and hit these rumble strips. That could be a safety hazard.
They, they are easy to remove. I mean, it's one of those things where you could, you could try it and could remove them if they become a problem too, but. That's essentially, I think, if we go to the next slide, I think it goes to, okay, so it winds around a little bit, but it's essentially the same thing. And yeah, I think, you know, we can look at adding a few more pedestrian warning signs. I do know that there's quite a few out there already, especially if we know where, where the pedestrians are primarily circulating. And next slide, please.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Are there, there are dedicated streets that are dedicated for bicycles that have like an eighteen mile per hour speed limit. Is there a way to dedicate Cypress to be an eighteen mile per hour road?
That is, the, the speeds, the speed limit is, needs to abide by the, the state's traffic.
Primacy or?
Yeah, uh, state's vehicle code, which says, it's very strict on, on it. It's, you cannot set a speed limit less than the eighty-fifth percentile. So this, the tra, devices are put out there to measure. So, um, this, the tra, devices are put out there to measure the, the, the volume, the, the count, get a vehicle count and how, what the average speed is. And then, um, it gets graphed and whatever, uh, the 85th percentile is, that's what the, we have to set the speed limit at. So that's why these traffic calming features are so important because if we can get people to slow down just responding to the street conditions, then, and go out there and do a speed survey, and the speed limit comes down, we can then post a lower speed limit. Um, but we can't just de facto put a speed limit out there, um, that then people are going to violate because that's, um, then we'll get a lot of tickets, but, um, so we, we just have to abide by that. Do you, do you want to, I think that wraps it up.
Oh, yeah, I think after this, yeah, I'll turn it back to Craig.
All right, next slide, please. So Public Works Engineering really appreciates, appreciates this opportunity to come before the planning commission, um, and share this with you. Um, we really see this as an opportunity moving forward with our roadway projects to continue to, to come before this, uh, commission with these. Uh, I think that was, um, the, the, the type of comments we got tonight were, were very informative to us and gives us a lot of depth. Uh, there's, there's more, more that we need to think about. Um, so we definitely, the, the process definitely gets, is benefited from this process. I, we have not done this previously. We, we haven't worked this into our process, and I think, um, it's a really good addition to do this in the future. Um, with that, I, I know we've been answering questions throughout the presentation. This is an informational report, it's a non-action item. So, um, we'll, I think, coming out of this, we'll, we'll take our notes and look to ways of enhancing the Redwood Drive Cypress project in the ways we talked about, and to add features to the, uh, sidewalk gap closure project and others. So, um, we'd be happy to answer any additional questions that you might have. That's, that's our presentation.
Questions or comments from the commission?
Yep.
All right. Um, since this is an information item, do we still go to public for comments like we do on resolutions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I believe if there are public that wish to speak on the side.
All right, so we will, uh, turn this over for public comment then.
Okay. I got lots of them. Please don't make me keep them into two minutes, uh, but I won't go too long. Um, so starting from the sort of macro and going to the micro, um, and talking about the, um, pavement management program, I would really love to see the Class One paths get added into that program because some of them are in really bad shape. Um, you're, there was talk about redoing that one that's on Myrtle, um, and recently the ones at the end of, um, McKinnon Circle that go over, you know, the two bridges and the little area there have been redone. But the Laguna Trail from, um, old, uh, from East Cotati to Commerce is full of potholes and bumps and big gaps, and that really needs to be redone. So I would love to see those things get added into the pavement program because they are pavement for other kinds of transportation. So that would be a great thing to do. Um, the 85% rule, there was a new law passed in the last year that actually, uh, allows the cities more leeway in setting your, um, speed limits. So, so that old paradigm is no longer, um, you know, the 100% law. Um, Class Four, Class Two, Class Three. Uh, Class Four Bike Lanes, the protected bike lanes with the vertical elements, didn't exist when all of our very outdated bike lanes in the county were last updated. Um, and we have been on a campaign with all of the jurisdictions to make that the default. Right now, when people think about like bike lane, the default is the Class Two, just the stripe on the road, um, whereas the vertical, uh, the vertical elements gives more protection. Um, on something like on Redwood Drive, um, and, and some of these other places, narrowing the street width and then also giving more lane to the, the buffer to bike lane is, is somewhat better, right? The, the narrower vehicle lane does slow traffic down, and that buffer gives more space. But, and which will make it friendlier for a person like me who's going to ride anyway. But if we want to meet our climate goals and our Vision Zero goals, we have to get people on bikes who are afraid to now. And a Class Two Bike Lane doesn't change behavior. The person, you know, the mom who's afraid to let her kid ride a bike to school or ride herself, isn't going to change their behavior just with Class Two lanes. So I know that times there are width constraints and other constraints, but, um, if we want to change behavior, more Class One and Class Four Bike Lanes are what do that and not more Class Two. I hate sharos with a passion. They, and, and my friend Dave Campbell and other folks, um, in the state who were among the people first promoting them when they were first invented are now saying, oh, hell no, we blew it. They don't change anything. It's just a little bike paint in the middle of the road. Already cyclists are allowed to take the lane if there's not a bike lane. And so it doesn't add anything. Most people I talk to who aren't transportation geeks don't even know what they mean or what they are. And in some cases, um, like on, um, Lincoln, one of my regular, uh, rides on my way to work, sometimes where they're placed is in the door zone. And a lot of people who don't know what they mean think, oh, there's a bicycle there. That means that's the line where I'm supposed to ride, which then puts people right in the zone where they're going to get doored by a parked car. So they don't add safety, and I've seen at least one study that suggests they might actually make things less safe. So, uh, to me, the only thing a shareo does is allow a city to say, is to claim that we made some bike improvements when all they did was slap a little piece of paint in the middle of the lane. It doesn't really change anything. So I would love to get rid of that classification altogether. Share the road signs, um, the, the revision of the MUTCD that's in process right now is looking at actually changing that sign. So my experience of those signs, right, the one that has a bike and it says share the road, cyclists think that means, okay, people, I have a right to be here. Get off my butt. Um, but a lot of drivers seem to think it means bicyclists, get out of my way. And I and other cyclists have actually been yelled at by drivers, share the road, because we're in the lane, which is what they're supposed to mean. So instead, the alternative sign is bikes may use full lane. That's very clear, and it tells everybody, drivers and cyclists together, that it's okay for the cyclist to be there. So that is a better alternative than just the share the road sign. Um, Cypress, talking about the, the uphill, and i- if there's ever a time when you're thinking about a lane on one side and not the other uphill is the direction, because that's when you're slower than, than the cars, um, and that little extra space is good. So I don't hate that. Um, I have to say that the, going through the plan sheets in the packet, um, they were very disorganized. There were, um, different parts of the project were intermingled, and some of them were mislabeled. And in order to try to figure out, I actually, I actually cut it all out. I wanted to look at the Redwood Drive and cut it out and put it together. And there was a cou, a couple of extra pieces that didn't fit in, and I'm not really sure where they were supposed to be. But, um, I'm really happy to see that you're looking at doing things on Redwood Drive. If you're going from downtown Cotati to anywhere on the west side of Roanoke Park, west side of Santa Rosa, I ride it a lot, um, that's a key route, right? Um, I'm happy to see that, uh, you know, if you can't make a, a Class Four lane for there to be the buffered Class Two, what, what always concerns me is when bike lanes come and go, or they get narrower or, you know, wider and then narrower. And it looked like, from as best I could tell, that there are places where it gets, where the buffer goes away, or the lane gets much narrower. And especially when there's places when a lane ends abruptly, those are danger points for, for cyclists, right? Because where do I go? I've had my own lane, and now I don't, and I have to merge into the traffic. And now I have this lane, but all of a sudden now it's only here again. And that's, that's really frustrating and, and can be scary, um, for a cyclist. Um, let's see, okay. The one last thing that I want to comment on is, um, at the intersection of Redwood Drive and 116, the stoplight does not pick up bicycles. Actually, several of our stoplights don't pick up bicycles. Um, so that is a challenge when you're, you know, coming through and you're in the lane and waiting to go, and light won't change and line won't change. So you have to go over to the, the button and push it, and you know it. Then it sticks you in the crosswalk, which isn't really where we're supposed to be as bikes. So those, those should get fixed. The other challenge at that intersection is when you're coming southbound on Redwood Drive, there's a left turn lane, and then there's a lane, a three-way lane, right? That you can turn either way or go forward. And it looks like the plan, there is a bike lane there, and it looks like they're looking at adding the green stripes there. The challenge there, I will never be in that lane. So mostly when I'm coming south on Redwood Drive, I'm going forward or I'm going to turn left. If I was going to turn right, no problem. But if I'm going to go forward or left, I do not want to be to the right of vehicles who may turn right, because that's again another conflict point. So I plant myself smack in the middle of that lane so that I can make my left, and I'm visible and safer than if I'm to the right of cars who I'm not sure which way they're going to turn. So, so there would be, it'd be nice to have something better at that intersection for that purpose. I think that is the end of my comments for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ooh, and I'm under five minutes too.
Hi, my name's Adrienne Lobby. I live on Kingston Way, which is off Page Street. And I'm going to guess that you need that recording so that you could see what she was actually talking about in all those places? Because that went by really fast. Um, I've got two comments. One is, I go up and down Page Street probably twice a day in my car. We do not need a speed bump, and it will be very annoying to have a speed bump there. And probably what will mean is that I will go over to Redwood Highway to go down there through the downtown area rather than going on Page to West Sierra to the stop sign. And, uh, that doesn't seem like a good idea to me. The other thing I want to talk about is the, uh, problem with the Mobile Home Park on, uh, West Sierra. This is really, really dangerous. People who live in that Moti, Mobile Home Park, a lot of them are elderly. They don't really go very well. If we wait two years and then we study it, what you're going to find is on one side, there's a, um, uh, across from the Mobile Home Park, there's a sidewalk. But you can't get there without crossing the str, the traffic that comes from the freeway. And it's fast traffic, and they're not paying attention. On the other side, there is, uh, I guess it's a creek, but it looks like a kind of gully, and it has old eucalyptus trees on it. So it's not going to be an easy place to put a sidewalk. I would really, really recommend that you take some of the money to doing some of the other crosswalks and get a crosswalk down there with one of those flashing light like we have on East Cotati at Arthur Street. I think it's, I mean, this is just an accident waiting to happen, and I believe we've had an accident there that, uh, didn't kill anybody, but it, it could easily happen. So thanks for the time and attention, all of you.
Thank you. All right, do we have any other discussions or comments on the commission? No?
Oh, Chair Savage, the Zoom.
Oh, there is a, someone on the Zoom.
There is someone on Zoom.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
All right, speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to pick a, make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon, or if you are dialing in, dial star nine. Chair Savage, that'll end public comment.
Okay, thank you.
So Cypress repaving, that's still in the design phase. The other ones are past the design phase, though?
Yeah, the other, I think all other projects are in construction. I know the downtown connectivity project is, and I believe the other one, the 2023 is, yeah.
So there wouldn't necessarily be opportunity to add some of these other, you know, crosswalks or other features that have been discussed tonight?
Correct, yeah. We, we have a, um, the opportunity is on the Redwood Drive Cypress Avenue project.
Do you know what Eris spoke about, about, um, the city being able to lower the speed limit?
Yeah, there, yeah, so it, so speed limit law will be changing. I don't know that it's officially, uh, changed yet. Um, but yes, what, the comment that was made, yes, the speed law, uh, speed law setting is changing. And it won't be necessarily using the 85th percentile.
Yeah, I was gonna, gonna add to that. Um, it takes a while to, for the law to be implemented. Um, for example, Caltrans is developing the standards by which we would all have to follow to, to implement it. Um, one of the immediate, um, changes that we were able to apply was to extend our, uh, the speed, the, the life of the speed survey that we had done. It, it usually expires after seven years, and we were able to extend that to 14 years. Um, and then the, um, other aspects of the law would allow us to, um, I think, create a, a, a safety zone, and it couldn't be more than 10% of the city where, that we could, that would designate within a safety zone. And within that, within that safety zone, we could, um, reduce the speed limit by 10 miles per hour. So from whatever that 85th percentile sets it at, we could lower it, I, I believe, by 10. So it's, we still, we still are limited to what we can do. Um, and it is taking time.
Well, it would seem to me that Cypress would be one of the streets. Maybe Water Road would be another one, where, where there are no sidewalks, where there maybe never will be a sidewalk, and just slowing the traffic down may be perfect for. I don't know any other street in the city that seems to have that kind of traffic. I don't know. And, and, and as to what Eris said about the, the, um, the paths where the bikes are, can we, it's true, they're in pretty poor condition. So what about getting any pavement done there?
I think as, as part of our strategic planning this year, uh, that was voiced, that was communicated to staff. And so we have a capital project for the Laguna pathway from East Cotati Avenue, I think at least to Gravenstein Way, to improve it. And, um, we're looking to assess our Class One pathways similar to how we do it with the pavement management program. It would have to be a separate program, and they, they do not degrade as quickly as the roadways, but, um, I think they would benefit from a systematic analysis like that. Um, so those are two, two ways that, um, the city's addressing the Class One Bike Lanes.
Thank you.
And just one last thought. Um, is there a way of, of testing or measuring the sensors that apparently some of them aren't picking up bicycles? Or are they just older sensors that were designed to pick up cars but need to be upgraded?
Well, we've, we've, the city, for the signals we control, um, have replaced almost all of them with these video cameras, which can be, um, direct, which pick up bicycles much better, which are very accurate with picking up bicycles because, um, they can be trained on to, to, to focus in on that area. Um, the traffic loops in the ground were, uh, less reliable for that. Um, the one on Redwood Drive is controlled by Caltrans, and so, um, they have the loop detectors, the, the more deficient version of that, uh, in the ground. And I don't know, we, we have, well, the city has no control over, um, Caltrans' plans on upgrading their signal detection.
But can we, like, have a letter sent notifying of their issue with this problem?
Yes, we could do that.
Yeah, that would be, I mean, you know, I know the wheels go very slowly at times, but at least that, that would be kind of proactive to say, hey, there's an issue here that we want to get looked at. Because I know like the Pocket Turn Lane going over to Thomas Page School, that took forever to get in, and finally, through a lot of pushing, uh, got Caltrans to agree to do it.
We, we use the public system that Caltrans makes available on their website to report a maintenance issue. If you see trash, or you see a broken fence, or, uh, malfunctioning traffic signal, you can go onto their website as a citizen and fill out a traffic signal, you can go onto their website as a citizen and fill out a maintenance request. And a maintenance request could be, the traffic signal does not pick up bicycles. That could come from all of our citizens, and it would send a very clear message. But as far as the routine maintenance, the Caltrans is very responsive to those requests. And I, and this is a, this is a maintenance request as well. So we'll, we'll go ahead and submit one as a member of the city staff. But anybody's welcome to submit those types of requests.
All right, thank you.
Right, any other comments from the commission? All right, thank you, Craig and Matt. This was super interesting and something I think we all enjoyed learning more about, and we appreciate your patience, patience in helping to educate us and bring us all up to speed.
Thank you.
All right, moving on then to the next matter at hand, being the 2022 General Plan Implementation Annual Progress Report. And I believe I'll turn that over to Autumn for that topic.
Thank you, Chair Savage. Good evening, members of the commission. This will, my report will be, will be short and sweet, and those guys are a tough act to follow because this, it's so interesting. I'll do my best. So this is a large chunk of your, your agenda packet tonight is this report. So as you no doubt know, the general plan of the city identifies the city's vision for the future and provides a framework for decision-making by our various decision-making bodies and functions. Our current general plan was adopted in 2015, March of 2015. So it's, it's been around for a few years, and you can tell by the, the implementation plan report that a lot of things have happened during that time, and there are still some things that have not occurred. I'm not sure what our schedule for readoption of the general plan will be, but it is getting to the point where there are some things you'll notice, if you read the plan carefully, there's some things that are sort of obsolete, like it actually calls for loop detectors for bikes, you know, at all of these various intersections. And as we've just learned from Craig, video detectors have become more popular as being more effective. And so there's a number of things like that in, in the plan that, you know, are not as fresh as they were in 2015. But a lot of progress has been made. The, the requirement to create an annual report on implementation progress in the general plan is relatively new, which started a few years ago. And so this is our fourth report, annual report to, to the state, and they're due every year by April 1. And we have the choice of reporting on a calendar year or a fiscal year basis, and, and we're using the calendar year. So this report is for all of 2022. And essentially, the report is, it's a, it's a status report to let us know how we're doing on implementation of the general plan, and let the community know what we're doing, and help us better inform the development of work plans and budgets for, for the city going forward. Next slide, please. So the, the general plan consists of a number of elements, as we call them, and you'll see them listed up here. The, most notably, the housing element is officially part of the general plan, but it is really a separate document with a separate lifetime. It's, as you know, our housing element was just updated. It's on a much more recurrent basis than the overall general plan, and there's a lot of reporting requirements associated with it. So this is different. This is just a report on all of the other elements in the general plan. And for each of those elements, circulation, community health and wellness, et cetera, there are a set of goals, objectives, policies, and then finally, actions. And those are what you find. Those actions are what are listed in that table that comprise most of the report. So in putting the report together, we gather information from all of the city's departments on what's happened in 2022 and update that implementation table. Next slide, please. In looking through the actions that you see in the plan, there's really two different kinds of activities. There's ongoing activities, and that includes services and maintenance that the city provides, partnerships that we're involved in, data collection activities, all kinds of activities that we are constantly doing. The other kind of actions are project-oriented, so that comes into the CIP, projects where we are updating policies or updating codes, all kinds of capital improvements or creation of new projects. Those are all kind of, we can, we can do those and we can finish them. The level of specificity and complexity in these different actions really varies a lot. And I will say, in looking over the last few years, that our progress has, has definitely been slowed by COVID, and so we saw not a whole lot of progress on some of our action items, especially sort of outwardly facing programs in 2020 and '21. And that is now beginning to pick back up. In 2022, things are moving again. We have submitted our report to the state as required on March 28, and the report was received by the city council on April 11. So this is our, our final stop in putting the 2022 report to bed so we can get ready to work on the 2023 report in just a short while. So that concludes my report. And obviously, as I say, the, the progress report is quite lengthy, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions or refer them on to the, the appropriate department if you have questions about, about our report.
Thank you, Autumn. You have questions or comments from the commission?
No.
No? All right.
Thank you.
Comments are from the public? Anything from our Zoom attendee?
Looks like we lost our Zoom attendee.
Okay. All right, there's nothing else from the commission, and thank you very much, Autumn.
Thank you.
All right, moving down our agenda, do we have any reports by staff?
Yes, I will be providing the report for the Community Development Department tonight. I need to put on my cheater readers to do that. So the housing element, which I was just mentioning. So as you know, the housing element was approved by the council, and we have submitted it to the State Department of Housing and Community Development, also known as HCD. HCD will now review and certify our housing element, and that, that process takes up to 60 days. So we are waiting. We anticipate hearing back from them in the week of Memorial Day. And then, following certification and the adoption of our 2324 budget for the city, we will develop a, a work plan from our department for the coming year, which will prioritize our activities and fulfillment of the housing element. So we'll be coming back to you, hopefully, in June, June or July, with an update on implementation of the housing element going forward. I also have an update on our bike ped plan. So I don't know if Craig mentioned this in his presentation, but the, the planning commission is actually our, you are our bicycle pedestrian advisory committee, and, which is great, because obviously, it's a, it's a topic of great interest to all of you. And we're happy to announce that we have some movement forward on our plan update. The plan was, our current plan was adopted in 2014, so it really needs to be refreshed. And we have been trying to get the update going for the last couple of budget years and not getting traction with that. And typically, our bike plan, bike ped plan update has tracked with the countywide bike plan update, so we can work in, in coordination with the county of Sonoma, and to, to affect our, our update as well. And both of our plans, because of COVID and because of funding, have, have really gotten off track. So we're happy to announce that the county has just retained a consultant, Fair and Peers, to complete the regional bike ped plan for the countywide planning, and our bike ped plan update will be part of that process as well. And so that means that we will be beginning our engagement process in the next few months, and we'll be coming to the commission in June with a project description, a timeline, and a work plan outlining how we're going to approach the, the bike ped plan update. And I'm reading from Noah's notes here, and he actually says for completion in this calendar year. So, so hopefully, we'll be really moving forward now that we've gotten over our, our funding and logistical hurdles. So expect to hear back from us soon on that. I also want to let you know that we have a new program for parklets and outdoor dining. The parklets, which we had in the tents during COVID, have been removed with the exception of the tent that's in the flagship taproom parking lot. They received an extension because there is currently no power in their building, and there has not been for some time, and it's going to be a little while still. So they're really relying on their tent and their outdoor dining. But all of our other tents are gone, and we have a permanent program in place now, which just went to the council last week, whereby restaurants can come and apply to us for a permanent parklet, no tent. You know, we do have, we have a set of design standards and an application process for that, and it could all be approved at the staff level, with the exception of in outdoor dining and parklet, anything that needs, that would be next to a residential use, does need a minor use permit. So still at the staff level, but a higher level of review. So we'll see if we get some applications. We know that Flagship, should they get their power back, would like to apply for a permanent parklet. And they have some, they have a parklet in Windsor, which is on the town square, which is quite, on the town green, which is quite nice looking. And they want to do something sort of similar. You have a question?
What is it with power there? And what can we do to help the businesses?
There, there is not anything that we can do at this point unless we have a, anybody who has an in with PG&E. The, the situation, as I understand it, is that there, there was an actual, there was a, a physical problem with their, their, their box, their circuit box. And they did not correct it in a timely fashion, and it became dangerous. And so they actually had to shut down the power to the building, and they have been awaiting a replacement part for a long time. They've just received it. And they have just told me today that they have an eight-week timeline with PG&E, that they, and getting on PG&E's list to get turned back on is, is lengthy. And so they have finally gotten on the list. So that's more light at the end of the tunnel than they've actually had for a while. So hopefully, they will continue on a pace. They hope to hear next week from their PG&E contact if they're maybe able to bump up a little bit.
And, and what is a parklet?
Oh, I'm sorry. So a parklet is the use of a parking space for something other than parking.
All right.
A vehicle. So I think originally, they actually were little parks, like little outdoor recreational spaces. They've become very popular for outdoor dining.
Have, back to the PG&E issue, have other businesses suffered or actually closed because of the lack of power to that facility? Or is it just Flagship that's suffered?
No, they're, they are all suffering. There are several businesses in that building. There's a barber shop, or it's either barber shop or hair salon. I believe that they're still operating. There was, I believe, a nail salon, which closed or moved.
Okay.
We don't know about the acupuncture clinic or Spring Tie. Spring Tie has just been closed. We don't know what their status is.
And it's purely on the owner of the facility to be responsible for that. Cotati doesn't require them to maintain the building in any type of a functioning manner or anything like that. It's just...
No. Although apparently, this was a known issue. The, the owner had, had opportunity to deal with the situation previously and, and did not.
One other question, Autumn, when you were talking about in June, the engagement process with the biking program, will that also include the plan for community outreach, to get community input and that type of stuff?
Yes. Yes, absolutely. Yeah, that's the first step. The last update I have for you is that the, the city council is, has asked staff to prepare a workshop to look at reach code options. Now, a reach code is the phrase used for a local amendment of our building code that goes above and beyond what the basic building code requires, and they're often used for reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. So a number of jurisdictions in California have used reach codes to adopt what's known as the all-electric or building electrification, which is a requirement that new construction not have gas lines, that it be all-electric, which some people refer to it as the natural gas ban. They're also commonly used for additional requirements for electric vehicle charging. And there are a handful of jurisdictions that have used them for additional, requiring additional solar photovoltaics, though much, much fewer than for the building electrification and the EV charging. So we are going to hold a workshop for, with the council next Tuesday on this topic, and we'll be looking at a number of different options. You know, what is a reach code? What, what's available to us? What about their jurisdictions done? And, you know, we'll ask the council and the public to give us feedback and ask the council to give us direction, to see if we would like to begin preparing an ordinance amendment to the building code that would affect one of these reach codes. And it could be EV charging and building electrification, or both, one or the other. And we'll see what comes out of the workshop. So that's, that's happening next Tuesday.
All right, thank you, Autumn. Any additional questions from the commission? Nope. Okay. Do we have any reports by the commission? This is kind of our opportunity to just give updates on things, or if you've attended any planning activities or seminars that you would like to share with the, the meeting. Now's our time to kind of be open forum, I guess. Is that the best way to describe that? Okay. Anyone have anything?
Well, I'll do a little public advertisement. Just want to make sure everybody's aware that the Historical Society's having their barbecue on the 30th of this month, and if anyone needs tickets, they can contact me.
Anyone else? Okay. Items received. After the agenda, we had the letter from Neil. And I, do we have anything else that was?
No.
No, okay. All right, then. If I have a motion to adjourn, we'll adjourn the meeting.
I'll move. Will you adjourn the meeting?
A second.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
You. We have a full group of people. Thank you.